Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan is absent. Councilmember Fleming is absent. Council Vice President Escobar, here. Council President Secor Ludlow, here.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Oklahoma City Act have been complied with and satisfied under the annual notice for the execution of the time that is placed in time in the Oklahoma City for the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board, which is the back vesting bill of city home invisible to the public through the windows of the lobby of the city home in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper where the city of New Brunswick may name the home in question. Did stand for the United States.
As we begin to declare the United States of America, you should be repented for which stands no nation other than God, universal, liberating justice, law.
Please remain standing in the moment of trial and trial that is suffering around the world in a special prayer for all of those who protect us every day. Thank you.
How many minutes on the new fifteenth reading?
Sir.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secor Ludlow.
Yes. The authority of the appropriate correspondent has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department for further action. Yes, the vice president's correspondence received by the city clerk called him to report it to the appropriate departments for further action. Thank you. I have a few comments I want to make tonight. First, the city council wishes to thank and congratulate the New Brunswick Police Department and the community for its successful national night out. The fire department and all the public services who participated. The night was an opportunity for neighborhoods to gather, meet one another, interact with our departments. High Street Park Association always embraces the opportunity, as well as High Street Square Association, who had participation from many of the downtown restaurants and businesses, Uptown Primark, Los Barbados, the scene of the Livingston and Remsen, Raritan Gardens community members, and Townsend Street area community members. It continues to be an event that unites the community and bridges relationships. Next, I just wanted to make a clarification. I think some of us have gotten convoluted in the past couple minutes and misinterpreted. There are two programs that we have during the summer. There's the Team Litter Patrol program, and then there's Parks DPW Seasonal Workers Program. The Team Litter Program is an educational program, and they do also community hands-on service and purification throughout the town. The Parks DPW Seasonal Workers, they have to be sixteen years or older, and they help and assist the city parks and the DPW, maintaining the parks, green spaces, right of lays, through lawn mowing, regraving, and litter control. On that, there were several allegations made as a last meeting regarding young children being on the back of out garbage trucks from this second program. I did ask for an investigation. I'm satisfied with the answer, I see, but Mr. Shammy, just, I know something you'd like to say about that.
Well, we've investigated or researched the legal requirements or prohibitions against having minors work in a sanitation function, or as a sanitation worker, and there are no prohibitions against that. In fact, they could work around a compactor, which is the back of a garbage truck, to pick up garbage. No prohibition against that.
Thank you. Next, I want to explain that a union, by definition, is an organization of workers intent on maintaining and improving conditions of their employment to protect the integrity of their trade through increased bargaining power yielded by solidarity among workers. Through their elected leadership and bargaining committee, collective bargaining agreements are negotiated with their employer. The city council is not part of that negotiating process, nor are we the body of which grievances should be submitted. There is a process in place for that through your union representatives. I understand the contract for the sanitation workers will be open for negotiations in the coming months, but I would advise you, suggest that if you want your voice to matter, you should go to the people where it's going to count, directly to your union representatives. That being said, we respect your right to comment at the city council meetings, as we do anyone's right to speak here, but I don't want anyone to think that because we're not commenting, that we don't care about it. It's just not the proper body to bring it to. And also, I want to say, and I think I can speak for all of the councils, that we respect the work that you do. We know it's a hard job, and we understand that. So, I just wanted to say those three words. And now we'll move on to orders on the second reading we have done. First reading, one in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 3 on York's November for handicap persons, at 215 Walden Street, 68 Main Street, 64 Reservoir Avenue.
Will the ordinance sitting down, will be seventeen twenty-two, at five p.m. and ready to go ahead?
Sir.
Council Vice President, Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secor Ludlow.
Yes. Two, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 8 Health and Safety, Chapter 8.40, Solid Waste Collection and Disposal, Section 8.40.10.0, Enforcement for Recycling.
Will the ordinance sitting down, will be seventeen twenty-two, at five p.m. and ready to go ahead?
Sir.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secor Ludlow.
Yes. Next, we have Resolutions 1 through 29. If the parents open this up, the public, you have one time left, five minutes. Please step up your microphone and give your name and address, meanwhile, the council.
Good evening, Councilmembers Charlie Crowe and Charlie Brunsweig. We're in Brunswick today. I want to ask about, first, the liquor licenses, special rulings, nine, ten, and eleven. Can somebody tell me what the status is of these licenses?
Ms. Alden, please.
Sure. So, the licenses are currently inactive. They've requested the permission from the director of ABC to be renewed. They're looking for potential buyers, but at this moment, they do not have any.
Thank you. Moving to number thirteen, the Guard State Veterinary Services. I wanted to ask if the city is in need of additional shelter services. I know there's a lot of cats and dogs being picked up. Is it true that the city, current contract the city has is not accepting them, or they're out of capacity?
I am not aware of that. I don't have any information for that. I'm just going to.
I'd appreciate it. I think the city may need to look into other vendors or additional vendors for that. And can I hear about Guard State Veterinary Services? Is this an existing vendor, or a new vendor?
No, it's an existing vendor. This is just additional mass for emergency services.
Okay. On the reported, number fifteen, I wanted to point out that if you go to the city website, you go to the reported page, doesn't connect you to the city's reported. So, it's kind of one of many broken or dead links that doesn't properly connect you to where you're supposed to go. And then, I think, the, oh. Sure. Thanks, appreciate it. Number nineteen is certain abandoned properties. And I saw an open request somebody filed, and the response was that there were currently no abandoned properties as of May. So, I'm curious which two properties this is, and why it's being rebid. Did nobody bid on the first bid?
There were no bids for the first, and there are more than two properties. I need them to, if you'd like.
Sure.
147 Remsen, 34 Lee, 75 Hazard, is that correct? Yeah, yes, thank you. 84 Hazard, 53 Remsen, 55 Remsen, and 10.
Okay. Well, I hope somebody will allow you something of those abandoned properties. Final question about the final item here, the sewage charges with the Franklin Township Sewerage Authority. I want to understand this agreement. Is this a new agreement? Is this an extension of a prior agreement? And why is it a twenty-year agreement? What exactly are the terms?
This has been in place since nineteen eighty-one, so it's not a new agreement. I guess we keep it extended because it's beneficial to, I send to them. I can tell you the services that we provide are, that we see through the Mile Run Interceptor, the sanitary sewer from the authority in the following two locations. The connection point into MRI Manhole 495, it terminates at Jefferson Avenue, immediately down street from the authority's manhole located at the terminal of Ford Avenue, just prior to the connection to the Mile Run Interceptor. And then, the connection points into MRI Manhole 1576, within the triangular area bounded at East and Landing Lane, and a road square connecting East and Landing and Landing Lane at the beginning of Parkview Drive, immediately down street from the authority's two manholes located directly east of that.
Thanks for the geography there. Can you tell me the financial terms of the agreement? Who's paying who, and what's the rate?
They pay, they pay us, Mr. Wallace, this is something else, Mr. Valencia.
The agreement with Franklin Township essentially is we receive and convey their sewage. So, it is a pass-through charge, back to the authority with a five percent administrative fee on top of that. So, if they give us a million gallons, whatever cost is that the MCUE charges city, we charge back to Franklin Township plus a five percent administrative charge.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public comment? Please step forward, State and Navy Trust. You have five minutes, one time left.
Hi, Mr. Neil Morris, Somerset Street. First, I have about nineteen with the abandoned properties. Can you explain to me how, how do you, how do you list this due to where I know there's more abandoned properties in New Brunswick? So, I'm trying to understand, for example, you said these are the ones that are listed for sale. This doesn't really include all of the abandoned properties?
This doesn't include everything we have. This includes right now those that have to go out for rebid because when they went out the first time, nobody was paying on the project.
Oh, because I'm really curious due to, I know there's plenty of, many more abandoned houses, and due to where, as I say, the city needs to take action, wouldn't it, due to where, as I say, for example, Comstock and Paul Rose and Boulevard, due to where, what? Termites are eating that up pretty soon, and we do get a good gus to where, and how that's going to fall down. It's becoming a rat den, where you see all the holes in it all, and I think the inspectors you really need to look into. Like I said, a lot of these abandoned houses, where they're just coming to be rotted dens, and that's surely not good, and believe me, like I said, if you go to the area, you'll see the holes being bitmen, where they're chewing through concrete and all. So, and then also, I don't see where abandoned properties, due to where vacant lots, due to where, come on, I think that's where you keep saying you're cleaning up New Brunswick, where, like I said, I say it's time to start working on some of these vacant lots as well that's been abandoned for how many years?
There are vacant lots as part of this project, but they are not part of this particular resolution going out for rebid.
Okay, well, good to hear, but like I said, I hope to see, due to where, like I said, as a person, due to where I see much more, more, due to where, I think a lot needs to be done on that. My quick question is far due to where, let me see, I see due to where from nine through eleven, all these liquor licenses, I'm really getting curious. Vice President Escobar, I got a piece of message about the George Street liquor store. What are you, what are you, what is the city trying to hold back? You don't want to announce to the public. This is since April first, and I asked you what the situation was with the liquor license on George Street. I got a parcel on the side from, from some point, but like I said, why won't you announce it to the public of what's going on with this liquor store, and why the owner can't have his license or reopen it back? Why won't you announce it to the public?
Ms. Alden, are any one of these three related to George Street?
None.
Thank you.
I just must add, obviously, that I did, with the last time that they mentioned that particular liquor store, I did say something here, and I was the one that said that according to the state, to the best of my knowledge, that was a challenge because their new owner is the grandfather, and I think that the liquor store can be a fifty feet from.
To church.
How many?
Two hundred.
Two hundred feet from a church.
Church, Jeff.
Yes, and I was seven years, so I was here when I did, yeah, so.
Okay, well, I'm glad that it's spoken in per person now. I'm not going to say whether I was here or not, but like I said, I recall coming to the, to the meetings, but okay. All right, the other one, that regards with twelve, the body cameras.
The others, well, this is for oil and electric repairs, not body cameras. There's nothing on that.
Okay, excuse me, Ms. Reddick, okay. So, what type of repairs are doing to this, to the police cars? Is that what this is for?
Yeah, it's a contractor out of the year, case or repairs, and it's been made for.
Due to where I had mentioned, wow, I see plenty of police cars with broken, new headlights out, brake lights out, headlights out, wow, not appropriate for, wow, for people to get ticketed, and what, you see more of the police department driving around with no headlights, not the proper wear. So, yes, I do hope to see progress in that, due to where, I've mentioned to you that before, honestly, that's one way, how, what, at nighttime, I can tell what is the police car, due to where, from the lights being out, and like I said, it's very sad to see how New Brunswick doesn't take the responsibility in keeping their vehicles up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. Next.
Brittany Peterson, Department of Public Affairs, Livingston Avenue. In the day they gave us the definition of the union, we're very clear with that means. Obviously.
This is for the resolutions only, Ms.
Okay, so obviously, I feel like I just wanted to respond to that.
You can direct a public comment, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in resolutions? Saying none? Move the resolutions.
Sir.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secor Ludlow.
Yes. Do you remember, does the council have anything it'd like to address this evening?
Just like, again, thank all people who came out last night, because it was a great feeling, seeing everybody.
Thank you. And at this time, we're going to open the meeting up for public comment. You have one time left, five minutes. Again, please just state your name when you approach the microphone. I'll have the first speaker, please. And remember, this is a comment, question only, not a question.
Good evening, everybody. March Curber to Comstock Street. I would like to, first of all, say that, you know, Comstock Street and Paul Rose and Boulevard, that building, is atrocious, absolutely atrocious. I have lived on that street for twenty-five years, okay, and it's been there like that for twenty-five years, okay. My second comment is 148 Jones Street, which is another, which is another abandoned building, okay. I am getting very embarrassed to have people come over to my house because of these abandoned buildings, okay. It used to be a very nice neighborhood, and now it's just getting worse and worse. But that's not the reason why I came tonight. My major reason was, is the water company, and the work that they're doing on the water, the water lines, okay. I talked to the director, I appreciated that he called me back, I left him a message, because I was very concerned that this work was being done on Nickel Avenue with no warning. Nobody told us that it was going to be done, and all of a sudden, the noise was so bad that my neighbor works from home, she couldn't work from home, okay. Now, and when I talked to him, he told me that, you know, it's very difficult for them to notify us, and I'm sorry, you know, I hear excuses and excuses, but they had worked on Handy Street first. While they were working on Handy Street, I'm sure they knew they were going to be on Nickel. They couldn't just put something on the city's Facebook page to let us know that this was going to be happening? I mean, that's my first, my first concern, that we are not told when this work is going to be done, okay. However, you know, he told me that they would be notified in March. Well, that doesn't help us when we're notified in March, okay? And also, Rutgers was notified in March, because my second concern was, you shut down Dudley Road, okay? And I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but on the corner of Dudley and Nickel is the Adult Autism Center, Developmental Center, okay? They detoured all the traffic from Dudley Road to go around the autism center. I'm sure these adults that are hypersensitive to noise really appreciated the fact that all this traffic was going past them, and I'm sure they weren't told about it. You know, to me, I'm sorry, that tells me that the city is more concerned about getting its work done than the impact that it has on the residents in the neighborhood, okay? And we deserve better. We deserve better than that, you know? I don't see what the big deal is to put something on Facebook, or to send out a nixel to let us know that you're going to be in the area doing this construction, okay? Last but not least, okay, I was also told that you were not going to do any work on the lines going from the street to people's houses, and you did, okay? You tore a property on Nickel Avenue, and I don't know how far down it goes, okay? You also did it on Handy Street, but my concern is Nickel Avenue, okay? You tore a property there to put in, I guess, the lines going to the house, okay? I want to know if you're going to come back and receive those areas, because right now they look like, okay, because it's all dirt. Plus, you tore up a piece of sidewalk, concrete sidewalk, and replaced it with asbestos. That looks really great, okay? In the middle of the sidewalk, you have this piece of this business. You know, I mean, you could, are you going to replace that with concrete, or is that going to stay the same? Does the homeowner have to do that? You know, that's my, that's my questions, because, you know, my feeling is, if you're going to do this work, that's fine. I understand it's needed, it has to be done, but number one, you can tell us about it, let us know what is going on, okay? And secondly, repair the property that you've damaged, because it looks like crap. We've got students coming back in less than a month, and they're going to see all this, okay? And plus, the asphalt is higher than the concrete, so I could trip over it. Let's hope I don't, okay, because I walk my dog down there every day. But that's all my comments for this month. And again, I appreciate the director calling me back. I didn't expect it, okay? And I was called back, and I really appreciate that, but the answers were not sufficient to me. You know, all I hear, all I hear from most of you is excuses. You know, you can't do it because, you can't do it because, you can't do it because, you know? And again, we in this city deserve better. We deserve to know when this type of stuff is going to be going on, okay? Especially if people working from home. I'm retired, so, you know, I just can ignore it, or I can leave the house, but, you know, other people work from home, you know? And it was a serious disruption to our neighborhood. There were detours, you know, officer in the back in his cap to that, because he was there, I spoke to him, but, you know, I just, I just feel that we deserve better in this city. We deserve to know what's going on in our neighborhood. I'm sure, whoop, I'm sorry, I'm sure, I'm sure if it was in Mayor Hayhoe's neighborhood, that he would have known about it. Thank you.
Ms. Curver, thank you for your comments. I will look into everything, I have examined the addresses, I know the concerns. The next speaker, please.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Council President, what was the address for the service line that you were referencing?
She totally said Nickel and Handy, but she didn't say the actual number. Thank you.
Oh, it's Nickel between, it's, yeah, it's between Nickel and Hale and Baldwin is where that, you're talking about the piece of concrete they tore up, that's now asbestos, asphalt or whatever the heck you call it. Yeah, it's between, it's a nice house on the corner, and he's got a, he had a nice sidewalk thing, it's right there, it's between Hale and Baldwin.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Wallace. Next.
Well, first thing I would say, no offense with you, Ms. Curver, but wow, it's mighty funny how I saw you all write on 148 Comstock down to the house that I was just mentioning, and oh, you didn't pay me any mind, but when Ms. Curver mentioned, oh, that abandoned building for almost twenty-five years, then you write it down?
No, I actually did write it down in the resolutions.
Yeah, okay. But I will move on, due to where, I would like to thank the public for standing up for me, due to where I know a lot of you see that I'm getting fucked with a lot of hate and racist from people in this, in this room here, and New Brunswick Police Department. Why? For what I do, no, it's not, because it's about racism, and like I said, what? You hate to see black people do good, and I will speak on it, due to where, wow, oh, like, it's heartbreaking where some of you think someone's your friend, but then, wow, long as you have four racist leaders that's in charge, and that's what they do to attack black people, you can't trust anyone these days, because you got to do your job what your job is. And I'm going to say, yeah, first, starting off, and I'm going to repeat it when Captain Miller does come back here, and Chuck O'Donnell as well. First of all, you come at my son with charges for fighting, how many fights you have in New Brunswick School? You dropped the charges on him, saying he had taken anger management. Wow, you lie and say that my nephew was arrested to records. What? He never was arrested, due to where now they want to drop the charges and send him to anger management. Wow, I could mess his scholarship up, but like I said, everything's going to the law, due to where, just like with Captain Miller, April sixth announcing, oh, we do not show faces of the public, any, of anyone, on video, right here in city council. And why April ninth, didn't him and Chuck O'Donnell put it up against my nephew and put my name against me? Me! Like I said, all of this to the lawyer, and it's all going to come back and break all of you, no matter what. And then, wow, I would tell you, heartbreaking, yo, the new officer, nine twenty-nine, speak to him at all times. Wow, for them to give me a ticket for trying to rescue, save a man's life down on the ground, wow, wow. And I mean, he seen the guy on the ground yelling for help, I'm just walking past, car nine twenty-nine sees me on Handy Street, walking between Lee and Livingston Avenue. I get to Pittman Park, land the man down, but car nine, nine thirty-nine, what, they're going to detain me and the man instead of calling a damn ambulance for the man? They give me a ticket for parked after hours? And what videos do I have here to show? New Brunswick Police Department on scene, right by all other parks, due to where, what? You have people drinking in public? Why do not, do they get tickets? Why, because they're not black? And I'm, I tell you, each and one of you racist that supports New Brunswick Police Department, all know he's targeting black people about treating, and honestly, I tell you, every time I look at you, Mr. Anderson, it makes me angry, due to where you were the main one to say that, oh, New Brunswick Police Department is doing a great job, oh, it really hurts, and if they were doing their damn jobs, a lot of this wouldn't be going on, from motor vehicle accidents, to the drugs, to the crime, or whatever. And like I said, honestly, people that you really think, wow, are there for you, wow, turns out to be the ones that they're enemy. Like I said, yes, I would talk to the public, the list of my enemies, that's Susan and Secor Ludlow, that's Mr. Shammy, that's Chuck O'Donnell, that's Captain J.G. Miller, that's Caputo, and Mayor Kay Hill as well. Like I said, wow, wow. And all I do is, what, try to do safety around New Brunswick, but it's not about that, it's due to, like I told you, what, how the public trusts me, and then, like I said, wow, you all try to make me look like the bad one? But like I said, even though I told Officer Mark Smith, I was right there when the man got hit by, hit by the train, I went by the school, car driving nine forty-one, believe me, you can go get the videotape from the post office and the business, where I was just walking, I was coming from physical therapy, and I just stood there, I knew something was not right, that he turned on his side to try to distract me so I wouldn't go over there. Oh, I spoke to him last night, and I told him, you can stop trying to distract me, because I know when something's wrong, because he was the same officer that just tried to distract me, what, on July first, when the person got hit by a car on the corner of Livingston and Powers Street. So, like I said, please, all this that I'm getting along with, like I said, with New Brunswick Police Department, was like I said, I'm going to, not something I don't, but believe me, I'm going to say in my prayers that all you racists have your day, due to where I am not no dangerous person, I have to say, yes, when you become an enemy, I'm dangerous, the only one reason why, because he's the one that punished, who was ever dangerous. And like I said, Escobar, due to where you keep making excuses, saying, oh, there's crime everywhere. Yeah, you're right, there's crime everywhere, but is it happening in the same locations everywhere? No, it's not. Just like you pick up garbage everywhere, is it the same amount everywhere? No, it's not. But like I said, continue to make, all of you make excuses for New Brunswick Police Department, and you will have your day as well.
Thank you, Ms. Marle. Have the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council. Charlie Crowe, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, I'm a candidate for mayor here. I'm glad to hear you enjoyed your national night out. I wanted to ask, is, I didn't get to see any photos yet, was Director Caputo there?
You know, this isn't a question-and-answer session, but I do believe I saw a crowd of directors.
Okay, good, good. By my account, that would be his first public appearance all year, and, you know, I think the public deserves more than ten, fifteen minutes to get to be with their police director, but it was nice that he showed up. We missed you all over on Townsend Street, where we hosted our own community national night out, and I want to thank everybody who came out for it, everybody who volunteered to make it possible, everybody who donated food, and, you know, helped to make it a fun, family-friendly event. It was really nice, and, you know, it's unfortunate that for whatever reason, the caravan of cops didn't choose to stop by, but it's their loss, and we were, we were really having a good time out there last night. So, I do want to sincerely thank the council for the street closure permit, and also thank you to the clerk at her staff for working with us to make it possible. And I did read, well, I want to ask about the police department. Is there anybody here who can tell me the clearance rate? How many crimes are being solved?
You know, you have to put that in writing, too. We tend to not, we don't answer those questions, too. We don't answer them, this is not a question-and-answer session, Mr. Crowe. You can make your comments, please, to see what you want, you're not going to see any answers.
But that's different than what you said. Didn't you say we could ask questions, and you would look into them, and you would get us the answers at the next meeting? Isn't that how it's supposed to work?
Usually what it pertains to the police department, they like their requests to be put in right in.
Why do they get different special treatment from you?
It's not special treatment. Every department can handle their department the way they wish, and I guess if some of their information is sensitive, that's the way they choose to approach matters when it involves a lot of crimes.
Okay, well, I just want to reiterate that you supervise the police department. And so I'm asking you a question about the clearance rate for the department. You don't know the clearance rate, I guess.
I don't have that information.
Can you look into it? Can you get us the clearance rate?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I read an interesting article from Tap Into, the media outlet founded by the city's public relations firm, Jaffe Communications. Quote, "In the first half of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, there were ten gunshot victims in New Brunswick, including a gunshot death." Not sure how many have happened so far in the second half. I know we had three people shot in my neighborhood last month. Also says, "In twenty-twenty-one, there were thirty-seven gunshot victims in New Brunswick, including eight shooting deaths." And it also says there were thirty-nine shooting victims in twenty-twenty, and that, of course, includes the nine that were in the mass shooting that Mayor Cahill still has not addressed almost two years later. And I'd like, if you could, look into it, to the department's clearance rate for shootings specifically and for aggravated assaults more broadly because, you know, it's a lot of people getting shot. And, you know, I know we only hear about them some of the time. You know, thanks to public pressure, the city has started to put more information out there, but still not even close to what we deserve. And in terms of whether or not the crimes are solved, we almost never hear anything. And I do think that, you know, we should know if killers and shooters are on the loose, and the police should work with the community more, which is one reason I was disappointed not to see the police come out to Townsend last night. But again, you know, their loss, you could go to Handy Street right now by the Walgreens, and you'll see a billboard, a digital billboard that says, "Hit and Run, May twenty-eighth." You know, if you have information, call the police. And I'll note that the sign is only in English, and probably most of the people passing by there prefer Spanish. And that hit and run was not posted on the city's social media channels, was not posted on the Nixle system, was not the topic of a police press release. And that was May twenty-eighth, because now we're more than two months later. You just put a digital billboard out there, and you're just letting that do all the work for you. And as far as I know, the hit and run hasn't been solved, and there have been other hit and runs since then. So I would just like the police to do more, to give us information about crimes that are going on so that the public can help them solve the crimes. And I think that that's a very reasonable request. I think that we deserve transparency when the crimes are solved, but especially when they're not solved. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we have so little transparency, and the police tell us to put everything right in, and nobody's here to answer our questions. So I'm just asking everyone who wants a safer New Brunswick to join me there at that park by the Walgreens, August twenty-eighth, two thirty P.M. for March Valley for a safer New Brunswick. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I'll look into those. We deserve better. Definitely. Mr. Cradell? I said I'll look into those, there are some.
Thank you.
Next.
Okay, once again, Brittany, Brittany, Department of Public Wiz, Livingston Avenue. The energy is off most of the time when I come here because I feel like, you guys feel like we're trying to be enemies, but we're not trying to be your enemy. We're just not understanding that you guys keep bringing up this bargaining system to the point where you want to read a definition to me as if we don't understand what the bargaining system is all about. I signed this contract. I'm not illiterate. I'm not sure if it's the color of my skin, the minute you think I'm an idiot, but I'm not. We're, we're trying to let you know that, think about why we have to come down here at all. We work for the city. You think we want to come down here against the city that we work for? Doesn't make sense. Do we go to the union? I am the union. I am the union rep. Why would it take the union rep of that union to come down here to approach you about things that probably are literally middle school to you guys? Because I see you have a lot of other issues you need to deal with. Think about that. There's a reason why we have to come down here because nothing is being done. And my hand is the contract that you gave me. I can read you something as simple as my safety that you guys said that we're supposed to follow in this contract, where the employees shall not be required to work under conditions of work which are unsafe and unhelpful, just unhelpful. That's, that alone, it messes up this whole contract. You say we're supposed to get paid time and half, you pay us straight time. We don't get lunches. When, when you see that garbage truck out there, do you see us eating lunch? They told us it's illegal for us to take a bottle of water from somebody. And the people that live in Rutgers Village, I would like to say thank you to them. They are always respectful. They see us working hard, they always come out and say, you know, thank you, they give us water. Do we drive a lot of the people that live in that area as well, too? A lot of intercity streets, maybe not all of them, but they're very respectful. But once again, there are times when we've been scolded for just taking water. You guys don't even provide us water. So where are we supposed to get the cold water? Where the trucks, like for example, today was about a hundred degrees. Imagine sitting in a garbage truck where the engine parts are under your seat. It's hotter in the truck than it is outside. In a truck with no fans and no air conditioners and all, there is this excuses of why they can't get things done. But you're talking about this bargaining system. It's not safe. It's not helpful. It's not, we work through COVID, you guys, we're still sitting in areas where COVID was a lot of well at our company. We eat in the same areas, we clock out in the same areas. You do not care about these guys. Michael Jewell has came down there. He's seen us sitting in a break room that's made out of brick that used to be a storage room with no windows, one way in, one way out, and a fan. I guess his solution was to go to Family Dollar and buy two fans and put it in there in the break room, and we're just supposed to be happy with that. We're not illiterate. We know that there's a union. They're not doing anything. We, we're not illiterate. We went, followed the chain of command. They don't care. From Tom Valenti on down, they do not care. So that's why we come down here. And then the nasty, now you've created a hostile work environment. Because also in this little contract you're bringing up, you're saying that the promotions were supposed to be shown and let everybody know that there is a promotion available for everyone to see. We didn't know anything about any promotions until the investigation started, and then now you guys popped up these random promotions to make it look like you guys were doing